Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, council met earlier this evening for a study session on our climate mitigation, regional climate mitigation planning efforts. No decisions were made. I need a motion to approve... Oh, for the record as well, we have a quorum with Councilmember Rollins excused. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda's been approved, takes us to special recognition this evening, and that is regarding a new development on the southeast side of town at Westminster Presbyterian Church. And they have been working together with our other faith communities to develop a tiny home village that they're hoping to call Hope Village.
Yes ma'am.
Keith Staley, I'm sorry, I was just like...
I was waiting for that.
...的土地land. Keith Staley, interim Assistant City Manager will walk us through what's going on over there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am to quote Brian Wilson, "I am really excited to be here tonight because this is extraordinary work that is happening in our community." We have eight more tiny houses in our community. As I understand it, seven of them are occupied tonight. And there's one that's still unoccupied and they're working on filling that. So, just an extraordinary example of our community and our faith community coming together. Here are, on the screen, many of the examples of the different faith partners that we have responding to this homeless crisis in our community. And they're there for your viewing. But tonight, it's about our friends at Westminster Presbyterian and what they're doing. Just a few slides here. For those of you who know where the campus is, over at the corner of 18th and Boulevard Road, got a beautiful facility there and a lovely campus. And they have a piece of property on the south side of the campus that couldn't be more ideally situated. Lovely trees, open space, a garden nearby. It cried out for eight tiny houses and the community heard that and they stepped forward. They stepped forward and created a truly extraordinary community, a place where people can thrive. The larger structure on the right is not a tiny house, it's a tiny kitchen and sort of a community center there for the residents. So, a place for them to gather and a place for them to store some food. There are the portable restrooms, hand washing facilities also. And then, just an example of the tiny houses that are there. This really is an exercise in faith and it's an exercise in courage. This was not easy for their congregation. It wasn't a no-brainer. It took bravery, it took somebody stepping forward. And the people that I worked with, and Theron and others are going to come here to the podium momentarily, were Frank Sanborn and Nancy Nelson and Peter Cook, all of whom pushed us forward and stayed with it. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the work of Casey Schoffler. Casey has moved on to further his career with state government. But Casey developed the contract on our side of the house, together with our friends in legal. He shepherded that through our process. I've got probably 30 emails from Casey with attachments, going back and forth on this. So, again, thank you to the congregation, thank you to Theron for your leadership, Pastor Theron for her leadership, really extraordinary. And I invite you up to say a few words about the project and anybody else who wanted to join you.
Do we need to come to the podium?
Yes, please. You'll be on the...
Okay.
On the mic.
So, there's no denying that I said these things?
Correct.
All right. Well, we are happy to be here too. This has been... I'll just add that I am relatively new to the Westminster community. So, on my first day, news crews were arriving at Westminster because news had already spread that this was happening. But it's been, it's just been an incredible process since then, the last six months since I came onboard. It's given the congregation a lot of energy and to make our faith incarnate in this way, to not only support, offering the support of our community to these folks, these guests of Hope Village, but also helping them make what can be a challenging transition to stable housing and wanting to guide them towards that. Because my history with the project is somewhat limited, I'm going to turn it over to Lit so he can offer comprehensive gratitude.
Pastor, just for the record, can you introduce yourself into the microphone? And then, actually, cameras are like, you need to face us when you're...
Okay. Sorry, I'm used to it.
I know you're used to speaking to the congregation.
Obviously. We don't livestream yet.
I think we got you. I think we got you.
I'm Pastor Theron Fenner from Westminster Presbyterian.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Littleton Dudley. Been with the church for about 10 years and am the elder for the Mission Committee. Also, one of our elders for the Buildings and Grounds is David Braun, he is with me. And Keith has already introduced Nancy Nelson, who is very strong in putting this project together. Want to say three things. First, thank you to the council for providing this foundation for homeless, a homeless initiative. I've seen a lot of cities struggle with this initiative throughout Washington. And here in Olympia, we're proud that we're part of a city that's doing some work and progressing with changing our environment for the homeless. Second, want to thank the Faith Alliance, a community of churches. You saw some of their logos up on the screen. In addition to those, in particular, we had five churches that contributed the tiny... Eight, I'm sorry, five churches contributed six of the tiny homes for us. And then Lehi, a strong partner for us, provided another two homes. Those five churches included the Olympia United Universalist Church, the First United Methodist Church, the United Churches of Olympia, Westwood Baptist, and then Peace Lutheran up in Kent, Washington. So, we've had a lot of church contribution. Our church built the double tiny home kitchen that you saw. And then last, we invite you to come out and see our tiny home village. Like Pastor Theron said, we have seven residents now and we should be full in the next couple of weeks. So, thank you for all of your assistance. We could not have done it without the city's support, or Lehi's support, or the other churches' support. We could not have done this alone. This is a partnership project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the group want to speak? Not this time? All right.
Just in closing, Madam Mayor, I too would like to thank City Council. Last year, we asked you to put $100,000 into the budget. We didn't spend it all on this project. We spent some of it in helping them install electricity and we have committed to continuing to support the porta-potties and the garbage service throughout the life of the project. So, again, thank you to you and thank you to the church for coming forward and making this happen. This truly is another model and another point where Olympia is at the front and leading in this response. So, thank you.
Thank you. I know there's going to be some comments probably from the dais, anybody? I've got some. Thanks for pointing out that this was a partnership as well with the city that came with funding. So, there was $100,000 that we set aside. And I also want to just point out, Peter Cook with the Faith Alliance is in the audience tonight. And we met during one of those faithful meetings a couple of years ago and talked about this vision and it's coming to fruition. So, thank you. And I am also proud of the Westminster community for rallying around this. I attended one of the informational meetings this last summer and it was pretty tense. So, I really want to thank you so much for persevering. And I also want to note that we do have this continuing fund available. So, and we have lots of people that want to build houses, tiny homes. So, what we need are more faith communities to follow the lead of Westminster and we can help you. So, it's kind of my entreaty at the end of the year is, we'd like to see more of these and they can be as big or as small as your church can support, can be two. So, anyhow, just tuck that away as you think about this time of year and so many people outside. Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just want to commend you for your courage and for putting your values into action. As we face this health and humanitarian crisis that's quite large and much bigger than the scope of what any single city can do, we look out at our community for partners and for individuals that can step forward with the courage that you have demonstrated. And I know that this has been a process for you as you've evolved and thinking about this, conceiving of it, to the point where you've gotten here today. And our hope is truly that this will be an opportunity for, a catalyst for other faith-based organizations in our community. But you're the first one and that's huge. So, I do not underestimate or undervalue the work that it took you to get here today. It truly is courageous of you and it's so important that we have a close-knit, strong community that's coming together in all these different sectors to help address this huge crisis that we're experiencing. So, I'm so excited that you've got a number of folks that are already there today and I would love to come out and see it in action. So, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Parshley?
I just want to say thank you as well. I mean, all of us up here and all the staff of the city knows what kind of work you had to put into this. I also thank the faith community because we can't do this alone and we're going to need our community and this is the perfect example of that. And you will become your own leader in the public arena. And so, yes, those of you who are looking at us tonight on cable, this is an example of what you can do in the future. And yes, we have a little bit more money left over, so jump in, the water's warm.
And just for clarification, Keith, where can they find out more about this program? Is it on our website or...?
They can contact either myself or Colin DeForest at the city and our contact information's pretty readily available. I'm Keith Staley, interim Assistant City Manager, keithstaley@ci.Olympia.WA.us.
Wonderful. And for also just a little caveat, that each group can select their own population that they want to target and they can set their own governance rules. So, it's definitely what fits, it's not one size fits all, it's definitely what fits for your faith community. So, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we are now on to the portion of the evening for public comment. We've only got, I think, eight people signed up, so we can easily fit everybody in in our first half an hour that's allotted. You may address anything that's on tonight's agenda or anything that is related to city business. You have three minutes. The countdown clock's over my right shoulder. With that, I will invite forward Linda Ann Moniz, followed by Heather Sradlin.
Good evening, Mayor Selby. I am kind of bringing to the table, I only have three minutes, so let me do this real quick. I will leave this with Kelly. This is also something that is village-based, but this is not like a low-barrier village-based. This is not intended for drug addiction or mental illness. This is mostly intended for families with children, the most vulnerable, the youth. It ends up being self-sustained. It's self-sustained in time, they pay rent. There are six different phases to this plan. I think I sent you the link, Mayor Selby. I just printed it out. I haven't done a lot of my homework, but also there is some language that needs to be used to have funds for something like this. Governors, it's supposed to be like a solution-based approach for something this large. This particular village covers 11 acres in six phases, self-sustained. It's, let me see, just real quick, the Winko was rejected, where now we call the jungle for wetland buffer requirements. There's about 10 to 11 acres of property right there. If we could use some language to help, maybe. It's, this is not a short-term goal, this is very long-term goal. And this village is based for, it's more of a true community neighboring... Oh, I'm getting lost because I'm in a rush. After the six phases, there are six different phases, this could house over 600 people, adults and children, with daycare centers, laundry facilities, recreational centers. Like I said, this is not intended for the drug addicted or mental illness. Maybe eventually people would get into recovery and maybe transition into something like I guess I really haven't did my homework anymore, a lot. Okay, so there's just like one more thing I want to add. I think that if we could create something that wasn't a low barrier, our community would really come together and be on board for this. We wouldn't have to go through missing middle and blah, blah, blah. I believe people really do care and people really want to help. And this village also has eight pages of people, different businesses, that have come forward, not just faith-based businesses, food businesses, the people on site working, construction businesses, material businesses. There's eight different pages. I'm going to leave this with Kelly and you guys have my contact information if you need...
Thank you. Thank you. Heather Sradlin, followed by Allison Spektor.
Good evening. I was here a few weeks ago and the list of issues that I'm experiencing as a resident and an employee of the city continues. We've had car break-ins, gasketting siphons from vehicles, vandalism to the property and people's personal property, people openly doing drugs on our property, car prowling, illegal fires and smoke. OFD will come out, document the fire, ensure that the hillside isn't on fire, and then leave. I met with an officer, only to have them ask the residents that were down on the railroad tracks to move farther down the tracks so they wouldn't be my problem, they would become someone else's. I'm working with a railroad special agent, only to hear that they aren't getting support from local authorities. He said that they haven't had an agent here in two years, which is part of the problem as of why it's gotten so bad down there. All the dumping of garbage, the fighting, the noise from them building whatever it is that they're building down there. Losing sleep from having to listen to this, having my residents contacting me in the middle of the night with their complaints, the things that are out of my control. I was up till 2:00 this morning having to deal with residents and their concerns. Losing my neighbors because of this, vagrants trespassing, the cost to us to secure and repair our property. We had a couple of coin boxes that were damaged and it cost nearly $1,000 to have them drilled out and repaired. Environmental impact, the trespassing, defacing public property, the waste, garbage, fires, how is this affecting the wildlife, the bodies of water that surround us, and the air quality? Why is this such an issue now and how do we fix it? Having housing offered is specific to those who want the help, who want to become employed, housed, and clean of drugs, mental health. Put those like-minded people together and have them agree to a contract to improve their life, such as regular drug testing, counseling, rehab services, not expecting them to necessarily be 100% clean at that time, but to agree to attend the appropriate services, whether it be for their mental health or addiction, or working on the road to recovery. Those that don't want help need to face the consequences for their choices and actions. Their choices shouldn't be my punishment. Their allowed to, their illegal behaviors is just making matters worse and inviting more people to come here, since there's no follow-through with the law. I understand that Olympia doesn't have enough resources for them, so send them to other places to get assistance, nearby cities, towns. Olympia can't shoulder all of this on its own. Law-abiding citizens should feel at ease, be safe in Olympia, and have the streets and city be clean once again. What can I do to ensure this? How can I ensure that we're getting the help, maybe at the state level? Someone has to make a decision for change and implement them, follow through with the process, and ensure accountability at every step. I don't want to be just another upset resident, employee, and business owner in the city of Olympia. I want to help be a part of the solution. Olympia's mine and my husband's hometown. He's active duty, which has us move from state to state at times. When he decides to retire, we would like to look forward to coming back here and calling this home once again. With all the things going on now, this isn't the Olympia I remember.
Thank you. Allison Spektor, followed by Renee Darz.
Dear members of the City Council, Mayor, I have come to comment about the city's legislative agenda draft. Overall, I am in support of everything listed on the agenda. However, I noticed that in regards to affordable housing, there's only mention of tenant protections and no mention about increasing the supply of housing. To be clear, I'm not opposed to tenant protections. However, the reality is that tenant protections cannot get around the fundamental rules of economics, supply and demand. We need to increase supply to truly stabilize housing. Increasing supply strengthens the bargaining power of tenants. The favorability of a contract's terms, like a lease, are dictated by the party's bargaining power. A tenant's bargaining power is based on a landlord's desire to avoid a vacancy, the greater desire, the more power a tenant has. The problem is that we have a low vacancy rate. A tenant is easily replaceable. According to the U.S. Census, Olympia's vacancy rate is 4.68%. Another way to think about that is that for every 100 units, only four to five are vacant. This low vacancy rate limits the bargaining power of tenants, as landlords have significantly less incentive to bargain. By increasing supply, the city can increase the bargaining power of tenants. I encourage the city to consider amending the draft agenda to include an emphasis on increasing housing supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Darz, followed by Sarah Joseph.
My name is Renee Darz and I love Olympia. I was going to discuss with you tonight laws and ordinances that are being broke on a daily basis, but I thought instead I would share my last week. I was at Ralph's the other night, pulling into a parking spot, actually it was during the daytime, and I had somebody bang on my window while I was still in motion, demanding that I give him money. A few days later, I was at Value Village. My husband is sick. I am sick and we are on a meager buzzet. Christmas is already tough and they broke into my car and they stole the gifts I bought. My sister-in-law was missing. She is four foot, 10 inches tall and weighs 85 pounds. She was missing for a few hours. We were worried because we know what's going on in this city. Eventually, she was found and she is safe. Because I love my city, because we love our city, I will come back here and I will speak until I have no voice left. I will come back again and again. I have questions and comments. Are you aware that people are told not to come to these council meetings because it's unsafe and it puts a target on their back? Tell me if those people, the thieves, the lawbreakers, are they required to lock up their guns into safes like the rest of us? Or are they exempt from those laws too? Perhaps you should each walk about this town when the sun goes down by yourself and tell me at the end of the day how you feel. People are no longer shopping in this city because they do not feel safe to do so. They are taking their resources elsewhere and it's hurting our businesses. What has happened in the last two years that we have seen such a drastic change in this You guys are turning away constituents, taxpayers, and law-abiding citizens' voices. Every city has flaws, but not to this degree. People locked their doors when they come through our town because they were afraid. The residents of this city would like free utilities for a year because we work hard to pay for our stuff and we apparently are working hard to pay for theirs. This is not about human hate. This is about hating what they are doing to themselves, to us, and to our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Joseph, followed by Maria Cortez.
Good evening. I'm here to compare and contrast two faith communities within our city. To Westminster Church, I want to thank you for seeing a need within our community to assist those who need transitional housing outside of the cold and away from dangerous, drug-filled, and crime-filled encampments, and providing a place to go for those people who want to make a change. You responded to this need in our community the correct way. You worked with our city leaders and with an experienced agency to assist and truly help people in a lasting way. While I may have some misgivings about the Low Income Housing Institute because of some of their less successful communities in Seattle, I can only hope and believe that they have learned from those mistakes and they won't be repeated here in Olympia. We are monitoring things closely and I am encouraged that the Plum Street Village has not been a problem yet and I am optimistic for the same for Westminster. And I sincerely thank them for their efforts. With regard to First Christian Church and Pastor Amy LaCroix, your involvement in stopping the long-anticipated removal of the Fourth Avenue Bridge unsanctioned encampment was the wrong move. This camp has grown and become more disorganized. Jesus Christ himself said, "Render unto Caesar what is Caesar's and render unto God what is God's." The city government was in the process of carrying out their duty to the rest of us by removing that dangerous camp and abiding by the squawson's wishes with regard to their treaty rights. That would have been rendering unto Caesar. And now it is time for you to render unto God what is God's. It seems like you're in over your head. Perhaps led astray and manipulated by misguided advocates and some political maneuvering, perhaps those squatting there and stalling for time to do what they want. In the future, allow the city to do what they need to do to remove dangerous encampments without interference. Provide shelter for those people in your homes, on your church property, as Westminster is. Please do not continue to go down this road at the expense of our entire city. Do the right thing as a purported follower of Christ. To this council, I and others look forward to working with you in 2020 towards the betterment and safety of our community. We fully believe that the current and unacceptable conditions in Olympia can be turned around and it can be done compassionately without enabling criminality, addiction, and ever-growing unsanctioned encampments that seems to be no end in sight. To those who have met with us already and will be meeting with us in 2020, we sincerely thank you as well. Those of you that are too steeped in ideologies, who may dismiss us and maybe even mock us, you continue to do so at your own political peril and our city's actual peril. We are open to meeting with anyone willing to do the right thing and change course where it is needed. We don't have to agree on every single point or be polite politically on every issue, but we need to change what's clearly not working within our community. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. Maria Cortez, followed by Holly Davies. Can we lower the podium? We have the ability to make it so it's easier for you to access the mic.
Yeah, we can bring it down and then you don't have to try and stretch. How's that? Did that get you?
Thanks, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. I would like to say that I am part of the homeless community, not only me, but my daughter. We did not do anything to create our situation. This just all happened by horrible circumstances and because of some of the laws, we are being denied any kind of help. Just recently, we were taken off of food stamps except for $16 a month. We were told basically that just because we live in a 15-foot travel trailer on friends' property with no water, no heat, no sewage, we're not technically homeless. Where exactly does that line cross? Do we have to be drug addicted? Do we have to be going to the bathroom on the streets? Do we have to be seen by the public, including our school-aged children on buses, doing drugs? What do we have to do to be considered homeless? Because I've talked to some of the homeless that we're in this situation with, their funding isn't being cut and they're getting the services. They're getting what they need. My daughter's still in high school. She went to a trade school at 16 years old and got her CNA license. She's now my caregiver. I can't work, but she can. And because she is over 18 years old now, we're getting cut from funding from everything that we needed to begin with. cut from funding from everything that we needed to begin with. Her car, it's dying on us. We can't get to doctor's appointments. I've called service after service after service. We can't get anybody to help us fix our car. We can't get gas vouchers. We've tried getting gas vouchers. We're trying right now to go through paratransit so we can get doctor's appointments in Tacoma for me and to see if they have gas vouchers for us. But what I want to know is, where is that line crossed? What do we have to do to qualify for the services like the people on the streets? We've never done drugs a day in our life. We're not alcoholics, or we're not mentally ill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Davies, followed by Raven Yamada.
Sorry.
You know how to work that.
Yes. I'm Holly Davies. I am Chair of the Olympia Heritage Commission, and I want to make a comment today to bring attention to a good program that the city has, and to thank you for something that you're doing that's part of your consent agenda, which is the special tax valuations. So on the consent agenda tonight, you have three special tax valuations. This is a great program. It helps people to keep using historic buildings. The three houses that are on, again, on your consent agenda tonight, people have done major renovations, and for that, they'll be able to get lower property taxes for ten years based on how much money they've spent doing these renovations. And a lot of this is real basic work, you know, electrical plumbing, putting in new heating systems, you know, getting rid of old knob-and-tube wiring. It's not very, you know, exciting to many people, but we're excited by it in the Heritage Commission. And some of these, you know, it's a family home, one of them's a former governor home, one of them is from a Tumwater lumber mill kit home, and it's just so fabulous that we get to go into these houses and really ooh and ah over the work that's done. Some of them are external work, matching siding repairs really nicely, matching other materials nicely to see these upgrades. One of them used to be a single-family home. It's now split into apartments, showing the changing uses that these buildings can have, but they can still retain their historic character while changing to match the different needs of the city. So I just, again, wanted to thank you for this and bring a little bit of thanks to this evening and the comment period.
Thank you.
Raven Yamada, followed by Derek, did you sign up for the public hearing? Or you want to do both? Just this? Okay, excellent, okay.
Good evening. I am a resident of downtown. I'm also an employee at a local business.
Oh, yeah, there.
Is that better? So I'm a local resident and employee of downtown. I actually work and live across the street from both buildings, and consistently, I fear for my safety. I also fear for my coworkers and the customers that come into our store. Consistently, we have found needles in our parking lot. We have also found drug paraphernalia, and I personally have been threatened, as well as learning about consistent issues of stabbings in the near area. It was an issue a couple months ago. Thankfully, it hasn't been a recent issue. But consistently, I do fear for my safety. I find that there isn't enough being done in the downtown area, and I think that not enough people who are in power are walking around and spending their time in downtown to actually see and experience it themselves. I think that's a real problem. I think also that I attended the homelessness response workshop, and I learned a lot of great things, but I didn't learn how we're going to fix it or how we're going to approach the issues. So hopefully, come January, you guys will finally enact a plan, but it kind of left us off on a what's going on next, and I'd like to know more about that. If there's resources for that, that would be great. I think that in terms of finding solutions to these problems, one thing that worked really well was closing the well. I find that a lot of crime and instances of violence have kind of decreased in our area of work and where I live, and I think that that was a great idea. Now we need to do something with it, but things like that are solutions to this huge problem that we're experiencing. I also think that the homelessness issue is kind of covering up the real problem of drug abuse, and when I attended the homelessness workshop, there was a lot of talk about how it's homelessness, and I understand that that's an issue, but along with that, it brings drug abuse, it brings crime, it brings just a slew of issues to our area. And I love Olympia. I grew up here. I really don't want it to turn into trash, but it's starting to look like Seattle, and Seattle is trash. And it would just be awesome if you guys would do something. Soon would be great, but that homelessness issue, it's really drug problems. It's literally, there are needles at my feet, and we even had a kid pick up a needle in our parking lot and bring it up to us. Another, one last thing, is that I know that there were a lot of topics and a lot of statistics that were mentioned at that workshop. I think that they were not appropriate to what the real big issue is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Derek Harris.
I ought to lift this. I'll just do that. So hi, my name's Derek Harris. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Community Services. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Homeless Housing Hub, which serves as our local continuum of care, and I'm also the Housing Action Team Representative for the Courtney and the Council for Thurston Thrives. I'm here to make comment in support of the CDBG Amendment Plan as it supports the building of new affordable housing, which aligns with many community plans and could support many different target populations of those experiencing homelessness in our community, to include youth, young adults, families, single adults, and veterans. The proposal is also made in accordance with the following plans of Olympia's CDBG Strategic Plan, Thurston County's Five-Year Homeless and Housing Plan, Olympia's Draft Homeless Response Plan, which will be coming out soon in January, February, Olympia's Home Fund Plan that has a simple goal of three hundred units in five years, and the county's Housing Action Team Pipeline Plan, which includes land acquisition intended to align with upcoming priority projects. Wanted to say that we appreciate that the City of Olympia is looking at creative ways to bring new affordable housing units in our community. Thank you.
All right, we've got a couple, there's a lot of body language going on right now. So Derek Harris just spoke, and you also signed up for the public hearing, and I select, yeah, I think you gave the wrong testimony at the wrong time, and I have a sign-up sheet that gets pulled like just a minute before we go on, and so if you aren't on the sign-up sheet, I can't add you. We just, I'm so sorry, and so we just, that's just kind of our hard and fast rule. If you haven't signed up by the time we pull the sheet, we don't open it up because there are some nights where we have people, we would, it's, we just have to kind of make that line and make it fair for, you know, or unfair for everybody, I guess, in this case. I'm so sorry. So that concludes our public comment period for this evening. Any questions, comments from the dais? Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Maria. I'm going to have Kelly, our Communications Director, come over and give you my card. I would love to have a conversation with you and connect you with our state Legislature's Office. They have caseworkers that can actually take a look at all of the possible benefits that are available to you and all the resources to ensure that you're actually getting all the ones that you're eligible for. I'm so sorry that you've had trouble accessing on housing or homeless services and homeless resources. The public safety net that we have has been cut. The food stamps SNAP benefits are actually going to be cut even more according to the federal administration, but I think that there's, the state is talking about restoring some of those cuts, and there might be resources available that you're not aware of, hopefully. So it's going to be Danielle Westbrook, who I'm going to connect you with. So thank Danielle in advance, but if you give me a call or send me an email, I will connect with you as soon as you contact me. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Thank you. More housing, yes. I appreciate Linda and Allison both talking about that urgent need for more housing. I personally don't believe that it's a supply and demand situation, though. I think there is so much demand in Western Washington in particular, all up and down the West Coast, that we can't put up enough demand to change the vacancy rates here. So that means maybe there's a more fundamental issue in how we consider homes to be an investment, a money-making investment first and a shelter second. It's not working out very well for us. So I'm, we're certainly going to continue to look at whatever incentives and encouragements we can offer for the creation of affordable housing, and like Linda was proposing tonight, we might have to think about brand-new ways that are different from the kind of housing that we've lived with for a long time in order to provide shelter for people. So I appreciate that, and I also wanted to appreciate Holly coming this evening and the work of the Heritage Commission, because preparing these proposals for historic houses that have been renovated to get this heritage status is no mean feat. It's a lot of work, and it's mostly done by volunteers, and I just, I wanted to really appreciate the work of the Heritage Commission, and I'm glad that we have three more houses that are historic to our community and have had the work in to live another life. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially, followed by Mayor Protem Bateman.
Someone said here that it's scary to come and that you feel threatened if you come speak here. That actually makes me sad because one of the fundamentals in our country is freedom of speech, and I will fight literally to the death for that because I, even if someone's saying something that makes my blood boil, it's your right to be able to say that. As city council, as an elected, I need to hear that. We may not always agree, and I'm okay with that because that's what our country is built on. Ability to have these conversations without bullets involved is super important, and we have to defend that. So I am sorry if anyone feels they can't come to this chamber and speak their truth to us, even if it's not our truth. So I apologize to any of those folks. I will say that without those conversations, we're not going to move this conversation of what are we going to do about our crisis forward, and that means coming together and having the difficult conversations where we don't agree with each other, and that is okay. I like when people like Linda come and give us ideas. Build-A-Bus, not too long ago, came with an idea, and look where you've taken it. Westminster Church, the Faith Alliance have come with ideas, and we're not all going to agree. That's okay. I have to tell you, Sarah, it's not Pastor Amy. It's my responsibility because I voted that night in September to stay. I won't let Pastor Amy take that responsibility, okay? And I will talk to anyone about anything. I can't guarantee we'll agree, but I will do it. And the last thing, Allison and everyone else who says that I think our next steps are housing, and more housing, and more housing, and I'll say it three more times, housing, housing, and housing, because that's what we need to do to move away from just making mitigation camps to getting people actually with true roofs.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gilman, for reminding me of Allison's comment. I happen to agree on the macro level with my colleague, Councilmember Gilman, but I disagree on the specific policy, so I will be actually asking the council to consider adding to our legislative agenda a bullet point that says, "Support legislation increasing statewide housing supply," and I thank you for that. I think it's something that we think about, but, and we just kind of make that assumption, but to actually articulate it there. We've spoken with our legislators, but thank you for that reminder. We were just having a study session earlier tonight on our climate action plan, actually, and we talked about the need for increasing density, and we actually asked them to call that out specifically. They alluded to it in terms of policies around transportation and multimodal, you know, policies, but we actually asked to specifically talk about density because we think it's important to change that conversation. So I think on the macro level, Councilmember Gilman, I agree with you that we fundamentally in our society need to think differently about how we view housing, and instead of being a commodity, thinking about it as foundational. So many of the challenges that we heard and frustrations and fears and concerns that we heard from you tonight, all, the whole public, underneath all of that is the ability to have housing, and we're in a different situation now than we were thirty years ago. Just as an example, and when we have cities across Washington State where the vast majority of them, seventy-five percent of their land use area is zoned single-family only, meaning middle housing like duplexes, triplexes, row houses, cottages, accessory dwelling units, tiny houses for your grandparents to live in an aging place on your property cannot be built, that precludes a lot of additional housing options. Just for an example, in the city of Seattle, from 2007 to 2012, they created a hundred and twenty thousand units of housing. Five percent of those units were created in their single-family neighborhoods. It's a huge math problem, and actually, in Olympia, we're experiencing two and a half percent vacancy rates. So that math problem will not be solved unless we deal with it at the state level. And all of these challenges and all of these concerns about safety, about mental health, about substance use disorder, if a person doesn't have a home, that's foundational to their well-being. I mean, how many people do you know that have a substance use disorder that live in a home? There are an alcoholic that live in a home. I know state legislators that have substance use disorders that live in homes. We're not talking about them. We're talking about the people living in an abject poverty on the corner that don't have a home. We also need to increase our public safety net and substance use disorder treatment and options for people that do want to get in recovery, absolutely. Someone made a comment about forcing people into treatment. Washington State law, we cannot force an individual into treatment. That's illegal for a lot of really good reasons. If a person is dangerous to themselves or others because of their substance use disorder, in very, very, very small cases, they can actually be forced into treatment, but they're, that's not something that is allowed. So anyway, Allison, I kind of went on a tangent, but I appreciate you bringing it up and agree and disagree with my colleague, and I will be asking for that later. Thank you.
All right. Just a couple quick points. Want to kind of fall back on some of the homeless response planning meetings that some of you have been to here or in the viewing audience. We will be coming, or that team, the in-house team that's shepherding that process will be bringing that back to council for a study session in the first quarter. It will actually have a recap of what they heard, but also some actionable steps for how we plan, not just for the short-term crisis, but what we're hearing from our community as far as long-term planning. I appreciate Linda coming forward with plans. I didn't respond to you. I was actually out of town last week. But that idea of phased spectrums of housing for people that are based in recovery, something I strongly support. Recovery housing is definitely a gap in our community with case management, like Mayor Protem Bateman was speaking, too, with, you know, medical assisted treatment onsite, that kind of thing to keep people in their homes and healthy. So, yeah, I think I touched on some of the comments because of the homeless response plan coming forward, and just also want to give major respect to Mary Grace Godu, who is our new Historic Preservation Officer with the city and tackled three projects all at once, and she did an amazing job. So thanks for that. And with that, we will go on to our consent calendar for this evening. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or polls? Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you, Marcella. I would like to poll item 4I for separate action.
All right. Any other questions, comments, or polls this evening? All right. So with the exception of item 4I, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have that part of the consent calendar approved, and right now, I need to recuse myself from item 4I, as it's a property in which I have an interest. So I'm passing the gavel to Mayor Protem Bateman to call for the vote on item 4I.
Thank you, Marcella. All those in favor of passing Consent Agenda item 4I, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Agenda item 4I passes.
Thank you. Couldn't help myself. It's just like, all right. So we are on to a public hearing this evening. It's item 5I, if you're following at home, and it's a hearing on our community development, block, gram, program, year amendments. So staff has identified a total of five hundred and fifty thousand. So staff has identified a total of $550,000 in the CDBG funds that are available to be reallocated in the current program year of 2019. So it's my pleasure to invite Anna Schlecht, who is our Community Services Programs Manager, to explain what all that means, program years and CDBG.
All of that. Good evening, Mayor Selby and Olympia City Council and stakeholders throughout Olympia and beyond. We have an opportunity tonight to talk about solutions to our homeless crisis and our housing crisis. And that solution, although it won't solve all of our problems, is the Community Development Block Grants Amendment. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing to talk about adding $550,000 to the current program year to provide housing. As you know, we're in the middle of a strategy plan, a five-year strategy plan, where the highest priority is housing, whether it's directly buying housing or buying land to support new housing construction. Housing is the highest priority. Other priorities include housing rehabilitation, public facilities, social services, and land acquisition for other purposes. But as one of our council members said, housing, housing, housing. We're proposing that, ooh, got a funny little logo in the middle of that. We're proposing that we add $550,000 for the purposes of buying property that will be suitable for constructing multifamily housing. And while we have worked with you on smaller-scale projects in the past, single-family housing, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, we're talking about a project that would offer a minimum of 50 units or more. So the proposal is to use the entirety of these funds to purchase land to build new The source of these funds, kind of bring up a phrase, when one door closes, another door opens. The Salvation Army, as we all know, canceled their project and decided not to move forward on their day center project with public funding. They wanted the flexibility of using private funding. We looked at that $425,000 and went back and found every other sofa cushion, if you will, and found all other pots of CDBG funding that hadn't been spent, swept it all together, and came up with a total of $550,000 that can be reallocated at this time. And that is a picture of the current community kitchen at Salvation Army. Land acquisition is one of the few ways that we can put some big money into new housing construction. CDBG has a prohibition against new construction unless it's conducted by a community-based development organization. You can do utilities and infrastructure. Sidewalks and street lighting are very important, but it doesn't get you very far, very fast to put people in new homes and get them off the street. And the project we're featuring here that we helped one year ago was $400,000 that we spent helping Family Support Center buy two parcels, which includes raw land upon which they will build 80 units for formerly homeless and very low-income families. So we went through a due diligence process and identified six properties that met our general criteria of having general quality-of-life amenities like schools, public transportation, but also social service amenities, places where very low-income people can survive with walking distance to meal programs, case management services, et cetera. We also wanted to make sure that it was consistent with other plans. The Community Development Block Grant Program is guided by our five-year strategy plan. But we also consulted with our colleagues on the five-year homeless housing plan of Thurston County. Being staff people, we are privy to the yet-to-be-released homeless response plan, but we consulted with staff working on that and also looked at the downtown strategy plan. And, you know, taking words from people earlier this evening, housing is the solution to homelessness. More housing is the solution to the supply and demand problem. And one of the most critical issues is that it needs to be affordable housing, whether that's subsidized, like a permanent supportive housing project, or whether it's privately cost-engineered like Merit Manor to provide low-cost housing with a minimum amount of public subsidy. So we looked far and wide, looked at six properties in particular, and we are going to be bringing two of those properties forward to you next week at an executive session with pros and cons and with the assistance of Mike Reed, our Economic Development Director, who got his start as a Realtor and really understands property acquisition. We are also reminding not just the council, and you know that when you enacted the Home Fund, the goal was to use Home Fund dollars to leverage them with our Community Development Block Grant dollars to put them together for the maximum benefit of creating more housing. The Home Program has a goal of creating 300 units by the year 2023. And I think that we are not quite halfway there, but with CDBG funding, we'll be getting 80 units built at Family Support Center's new property. The Martin Way Building, the Martin Way property, will support over 60 housing units. As I said earlier, our hope is that the land that we find will be suitable for the development of 50 to 100 more units. And the picture here is of Billy Frank Jr., which was not acquired with CDBG. And that project happened before the Home Fund. We supported it by providing them a remarkable discount on city-owned property, a very small parking lot downtown. But this shows how much housing you can get on a tiny urban footprint. So your public process is a 30-day public comment period. It started December 3, and it runs to January 3. We put a newspaper notice, have information on our website, we sent out emails, we've mentioned this at public meetings. And tonight, you're holding a public hearing. Next week, you will be holding an executive session to look at the top two recommendations that staff have identified. You'll review all the public comment and finalize what your intentions are. And on January 6, we will make the final decision. And as you know, we love this circle of life, the circle of housing, the circle of Community Development Block Grant Program. But here we are in December where you are taking action to amend our current program year by holding this public hearing. So at this time, unless you have any questions, I would like to remind the viewing public that you can either rush right down and testify tonight, or you can call City Council at 753-8447, email us at cdbg@ci.Olympia.WA.us, or send letters. We love mail. P.O. Box 1967, Olympia, Washington, 98507. And unless there are any other questions?
Any questions from the desk?
I am hoping that we can get a repeat performance from Derek Harris, who has been a very strong leader in developing the pipeline, which serves as another housing plan, where we work strategically with other funders, with the providers, to make sure that those projects have what they need, when they need them, to move forward to completion and welcoming new people into their homes. So with that, Derek Harris.
I think I need to open the public hearing first. Sorry. You just took my gavel. Everyone's taking my gavel. So at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing on proposed amendments to program year 2019 as part of the 30-day public comment period running from December 3, 2019, to January 3, 2020. I have one person signed up, but I will open this up as I do for public hearings to anyone in the audience that might have gotten here late. I'd like to call forward Derek Harris. You won't have as many quizzical looks this time.
Sorry about that. And thank you, Mayor Selby and City Council. I'm going to restate what I said earlier, just for the record. So again, my name's Derek Harris. I serve as the Chief Executive Officer for Community Youth Services. And I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Homeless Housing Hub, which serves as our local continuum of care, as well as the Housing Action Team Representative for the Coordinated Council of Thurston Thrives. I'm here to make a comment in support of the CDBG Amendment Plan as it supports the building of new affordable housing, which aligns with many community plans and could support many different target populations of those experiencing homelessness, including youth and young adults, families, single adults, veterans, et cetera. I think the Billy Frank Jr. example was a really good one that included all those target populations and what we're looking about today. This proposal is also being made in accordance with the other following plans of Olympia's CDBG Strategic Plan, Thurston County's Five-Year Homeless Housing Plan, Olympia's Draft Homeless Response Plan, which you mentioned earlier, Olympia's Home Fund Plan that had a goal of 300 units in five years, and the county's Housing Action Team Pipeline Plan, which includes land acquisition, intended to align with upcoming priority projects. I just want to say we appreciate the City of Olympia's leadership and creative ways to bring on new affordable housing into our community, as earlier referenced by the tiny homes as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to participate in the public hearing? Is there anyone else in the audience? Oh, wonderful.
Lisa Gilati is coming up to speak, and you also received a copy of a public comment we received from their organization on December 3.
Great, thank you. And just remember to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Lisa Gilati and Executive Director and founder of Build-A-Bus Home. And I support this project and reallocating the funds. And, okay, so I'm not sure what else she wants me to say. So I mentioned that we have our mobile hygiene infrastructure program, and we are in place and ready to roll very soon, this coming week, two weeks. And so we also will be building homes from school buses. So I would really support this program for that as well. So thank you for looking at this funding request.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to speak during the public hearing comment period? All right. Hearing is closed, and as Anna said, you can still participate in a comment regarding the public hearing until January 3. Thank you. All right, anything else before we move on? All right. We'll go on to item 6A, which is an update from inner-city transits. As everyone probably knows, the passage of Prop 1 on November 6, 2018, that was 2019, right?
18.
Was it 18? Oh, I'm sorry. Ensures that current inner-city transit services can be maintained and provides additional funding to implement new services over the next eight years. And I'd like to welcome Ann Freeman Monzanaris, our General Manager of Inner-City Transit, to the podium.
Thank you. Well, thanks for allowing me some time to provide an update on all we've accomplished over the last year, in particular, our progress towards meeting the promises made in IT Proposition 1 approved last November. But before I move too far along, I wanted to introduce some of the staff that came along with me this evening, if I may. Eric Phillips, if you want to give a wave, is our Development Director. Rob LaFontaine is our Planning Manager. We have Steve Swan, who is our Senior Planner, and Mike Burnham, who's our Planner as well. When we're invited, we just show up in droves. So thank you for the invitation. You may recall, the list of service enhancements was developed by our community through a two-year community engagement process that we called IT Road Trip. The outreach effort was to ascertain what the community wanted from their public transportation system. We took the over 10,000 comments that we received and grouped them into what became these nine actionable items. We then asked the community to prioritize these nine items. They came back and said, "We think all of them are important and we're willing to fund them." 83% of the respondents of that survey told us to create a transformational public transportation system. Don't just do what you're doing now. Don't just do what you need to do in order to accommodate population growth and congestion. Go be transformational. So with that inspiration, we have delivered on the services that we promised in 2019. We have already delivered on many of those that are listed in 2020. And we just launched our Bus Rapid Transit Lite, called The One, that's listed here in 2026. We actually started making changes in 2018. We increased the span and frequency of service. We created some new trip options, and we consolidated our express service into Pierce County. And we're gearing up for 2020 and beyond. We have a huge work plan. One of the first things that we're addressing in 2020 is more service to Northeast Lacey as we promised. That service is expected to start in March of this year. So an overall summary of the changes thus far. We increased our Sunday service by 97%. One of the stories that we heard repeatedly in our survey work was those of our neighbors that could least afford to give up work shifts on the weekend were having to do so because they didn't have public transportation. We also increased Saturday service by 28% and weekday service by 18%. Overall, we increased service by 25%. That's almost 51,000 service hours in the last year. That represents about 60% of the promises that we made in Proposition 1. We do have this new route called The One. It launched on November 11. It's a limited-stop service between the Martin Way Park and Ride and the Capitol Mall. We have been able to deploy this service about seven years earlier than we originally proposed. This is funded through the state. So with the outcome of I-976, we are waiting to see if we are able to continue with this demonstration project at this time. And of course, we couldn't deploy all of these new services without new buses. We're getting comments about how fresh and bright and beautiful these vehicles are, which we're really pleased about. We have 24 new buses out on the street. The last one of those 24 went out on service today. We have 16 more going into production in January. So they should be out on the street this spring. There we go. And we couldn't have done this without some additional employees. Since January, we've hired 130 people. So we do look a little tired. We are a little tired. We've been working hard for the benefit of our community. We anticipate hiring about two or three more people before the end of the year. And in our 2020 budget, we have 25 new employees listed. So the ninth promise in IT Proposition 1 was to explore the way that fares are paid. We heard that the public wanted us to do something different and address a wide variety of issues. They wanted us to make service faster. They wanted us to use the same fare collection system that's used regionally, so they don't have to manage multiple payment systems. They wanted us to increase ridership, which means less congestion and better environment, and help individuals and families with transportation costs so they could better afford housing, healthcare, childcare, food. Help individuals get to jobs, as well as help employers get employees to their work site, and the list just went on. Last January, we started to evaluate a range of options. We knew it was past time to replace our fare collection system, so we knew we needed to make an investment there. We hired consultants to help us evaluate, how do we meet these community goals? And we learned some things that we didn't expect. We discovered that the ORCA system, which is that regional fare collection system, is 10 years old, and they're working to replace it. ORCA 2 likely won't be available to us for a period of two to four years. So there isn't a regional collection system that we can go to right now. We also discovered that it will likely cost us more to collect money than we collect. It's surprising to most folks that our fare revenue is a tiny portion of our overall revenue. So like public schools, public libraries, this service is a taxpayer-supported service. So avoiding millions in capital investment for a new system, as well as the yearly operating expenses to support a system, is a far better value proposition for us. We started to read about smaller communities that had instituted zero-fare systems, and now we're reading about larger cities, both here and abroad, that are considering or have already moved to zero-fare systems for all the benefits it provides. They are finding that not collecting fares do indeed speed up their services. It improves access and equity for everybody in their communities. It's been an incentive to retain and recruit new businesses, and it increases ridership, which again improves our environment and reduces congestion. So our authority proposed a five-year demonstration project. We had a public hearing on November 20. We received 128 written comments, and 30 people came to the meeting that evening to comment. The majority, the vast majority of those, were really interested. to comment. The majority, the vast majority of those, were really interested in the authority looking or approving a demonstration project. A small portion of that had some concerns about the program. The ITA, our authority, did approve the demonstration project on December 4th, so we are going zero fare January of this year. A couple of other things that we're working on. We are focused on emergency management, working with our regional partners. We are the lead transportation agency in Thurston County. We are not only planning for the big Cascadia event, but respond to evacuations due to fires and spills. We responded to the train derailment a couple of years ago, the microburst that happened primarily in Lacey, and whenever the police and fire departments need us, we show up. Another exciting thing is we opened our new youth education center across from the Olympia Transit Center this year. Now, we're able to have both adults and youth join us to learn and volunteer. We partner with school districts and park and rec programs to serve more youth in our community. Our focus is on helping students get where they need to go, walk, bike, and take the bus safely, and we have programs that allow kids to earn a bike and learn bike mechanics. And a long time in the making, we are within months of opening the Olympia Transit Center Expansion Building. This was part of our original plan. The facility is 24 years old this year, so it took us a while to gain the funding, but we're there now. We are bringing Greyhound on site. There will be additional customer amenities at this facility, additional bike parking, public bathrooms, indoor waiting space, and we'll also have some employees down at the Olympia Transit Center. And Patterson Street, we received our conditional use permit for our Admin Ops Fuel and Wash Facility Buildings. Thank you very much, since we're located in the City of Olympia. We hope to be in the ground next summer. Our base facility was built to support 80 vehicles. We are currently running over 400 vehicles out of this site. The building was built to house 208 employees. We have over 400 employees as well, so we're a little tight. So, we're excited about this new construction. And I get to brag for a moment. We have drivers and mechanics that compete in both the state and international rodeo competition. We're very proud to say that Inner City Transit has the best driver in North America. Our maintenance team of three mechanics took 13th place in North America. Our combined maintenance and driver team were second in the Grand Champion Competition, and that's right in between Oakland and Dallas, so we have some pretty big competition out there. In the state competition, we had three driving categories. Our drivers took first in 40-foot, second in 35-foot, and first place in the paratransit division. Our maintenance team was again ranked number one. In the state and for the fifth year running, our combined operator and maintenance team were named state grand champions. So, the state replicated the international competition with the Grand Champion Award. They started that about five years ago, and we're really proud to say that Inner City Transit is the only name on that plaque. And last, but certainly not least, a really nice acknowledgement of our community engagement process, which we did call IT Road Trip, in recognition of the collaboration between all of our partners to identify the future needs and funding of Inner City Transit, and we're pleased to share this award with the City of Olympia and the role you played, and Keith Staley represented the City of Olympia on that committee. So, thank you very much for your participation. And with that...
Any questions or comments? I'll start with our representative to Inner City Transit, Councilmember Gilman.
Ann, thank you for coming down and telling the story tonight. We did have the vote last Wednesday for the zero fare five-year pilot, and it was quite an electric moment. It was pretty exciting. Three quick things I wanted to say. First, the bold and unafraid transformation, I think, is a model, we had a work session this afternoon to talk about climate work, and the question of, is it possible to dramatically change a culture and provide brand-new services? It was a great example. Second point is, in terms of, some folks reacted to the new fleet of buses, zero fare. They said, "Well, are you frugal?" And we retired nine buses this last week, and they ranged between 500,000 miles and 730,000 miles on those coaches. We nursed them along for a good couple, three years after they might have otherwise gone to the barn. And last, I want to recognize Nathaniel Jones' leadership. He was chairing the Inner City Transit Authority when he allowed me to come on to the board, and the work of that board set the tone for us to look ahead, look across the country, to take risks, and to begin this long-range planning process. So, I want to recognize your work, Nathaniel.
Thanks for that. Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I love Inner City Transit, and I wish I could get on the bus more with my schedule, but that's another conversation. Your road trip model of getting out, and I know it wasn't quite countywide, but I'll call it countywide because you went beyond the normal urban area, is a model for every other agency that's working bigger than the urban area for how to do public involvement. I really, you know, my experience in eight years is when you want to ask the voters for something, you know, getting that work done, and so that they know what the needs are before you ask them, is essential to being successful. And I'm just so proud of you and our community for giving that input, so that it was an easy decision to vote yes. I think that the zero fare program might be the largest single early action around our climate mitigation plan that's happening anywhere. You know, the ability to get out of your whatever mileage an hour car you have that's not good enough, and get on a bus, and collectively share in that emissions or not, or reduced emissions, is super significant. And at the same time, it's helping people achieve a better financial stability and improving our economic ecosystem, as the council is out doing a study right now to tell that story. In fact, Jay, I would love to get some of that new data to our consultants that are doing that, if it's not too late, because there's always a transportation piece when we look at financial stability and economics in a community. And buses without advertisements are sexy. Like, I just have to tell you, those buses look good, not just because they're new and shiny, but because there's no ads on them. And I love that. And then the last thing is, so we have something in common. The City of Olympia has some new champion drivers. And so, in our waste resources, they participated in the rodeo, equipment rodeo recently, and won very similarly across the boards. And so, it's not quite apples to apples, but I do wonder if there's like a drive-off competition between our solid waste and your coach drivers.
They might want to drive each other's...
Yeah, put them in the opposite. I love it. Let's do that. That sounds like a lot of fun. So, anyway, thank you very much. I really appreciate the work you're doing and where you've come, and not a very long time in the job.
Thank you. Could I just give a shout-out to staff and to Jason Robertson, who was our consultant, helping us with the IT Road Trip project? They were all very fantastic.
All right, Councilmember Parsley, followed by Councilmember Jones.
I'm basically going to echo everybody's statements up here, but I just wanted to point out that in the last, well, in 2019, transportation became the number-one producer of carbon greenhouse gases, exceeding energy production for the first time ever. So, I agree. This is one of our first early actions, and I have to say, I'm on the Thurston County Mitigation Steering Committee, and I was always acting a little bit something, because our staff has put out a lot of early actions. But Rich, did you see what Inner City Transit did? You guys better get your game up. That is amazing, and I appreciate it, and the zero fares is amazing. It really brings us a long ways to equity, and thank you, all of Inner City Transit, for participating without knowing it in the climate mitigation plan for Thurston County.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones.
So, my comments are brief. There's been a lot said, but thank you so much for being here tonight and bringing your hordes of staff. Glad to see some staff here as well. You folks do marvelous work, and what I want to recognize is the level of coordination between Inner City Transit staff and City of Olympia staff, the transit operations, the traffic operations happening around the Olympia Transit Center. Our testament to the level of coordination, also out at the Patterson Site, clear coordination that has improved traffic operations in those areas. So, thank you so much for the work that you've done. Everything that you've presented tonight is very positive and provides reasons why this community supports your organization, and we need more ridership, of course, on transit in response, but you are making cost-effective moves and effective moves to make ridership more attractive and more reasonable and convenient for our residents. So, thanks for your good work, and thanks for being here.
If you can say zero fare, just get on and go. And this seems like an appropriate moment to give a shout-out to your staff, because your staff really is wonderful, and we present some big challenges, and they are always right there to meet it and help us. So, thank you.
You guys are great partners. I've got one question out of left field. Who designed the transit center, the 24-year-old transit center?
The original one? Parsons Brinkerhoff.
Okay, great. I moved here in '94 when it was just being built, and I just liked, it was such a landmark building downtown, so it's great to see the new addition. All right, with that, thank you so much. And we will be moving on to Item 6B, which is approval of the City of Olympia's 2020 Legislative Agenda. I'd like to invite forward Susan Grisham, who is our Legislative Liaison, amongst many other hats she wears for us.
Okay, good evening, Councilmembers. For the record, I am Susan Grisham, and I'm here tonight as your Legislative Liaison. So, tonight I'll be presenting you with the updated draft of the 2020 City of Olympia Legislative Agenda. So, as you recall, on November 4th, Interim City Manager Jay Burney and our contract lobbyist Deborah Mungia presented you with an overview of our 2020 Legislative Session, along with our draft priorities list. So, tonight I'm presenting an update to that list based on what we heard as consensus from the council that evening, and I'm hoping that at the end of this, we'll get an approval. So, first, I'm going to go over our first page, the front page of our priorities list, which are our main priorities for the year. So, first is state resources and support to address homelessness, affordable housing, mental health, and chemical dependency services. We did add to this the Landlord Tenant Act piece that was originally on the flip side, and we added it to our housing priorities, because they dovetail nicely together. And I'm hearing now that we want to maybe add another bullet in there about our increasing housing supply. So, if I hear a consensus from all of you tonight, I will add that. Okay, thank you. So, and then we are continuing what we did last year, the funding for new US 101 interchange ramp in West Olympia. It's the same information as last year. We didn't change that from when we last presented it to you. And then number three on the front is further legislative action related to climate change. At the last meeting, we had heard that there was interest in adding language regarding transportation mitigation, so we updated the bullets underneath that to reflect this. So, that's the first page. If there's any questions, additions, subtractions, edits, I'd be happy to hear them.
Mayor Pro Tem Bateman?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I'll just speak to my friendly amendment. As I stated earlier, in public comment response, I think it's really important for us to address the issue of housing supply. I think it's going to take us a minute before we transform our economy for people to recognize that housing is foundational, and that that becomes something that everyone has the ability to obtain and have as a resource. So, in the meantime, I do think it's important for us to identify increasing the housing supply, and I have to say, we're one of the few communities that's willing to have the courage to do it. We've got amazing state legislators that are also courageous, so I would appreciate your consideration of adding a bullet that says, "Support legislation increasing statewide housing supply," if you are in favor.
I agree. I just want to add, it seems a little vague. I mean, well, just increase housing supply like poof? It's like, what do you expect them to do to do that? I mean, what we've done is very specific with our land use. So, do you want to talk about?
Well, I passed HBE 1923 already. Yeah, so, we've talked about before with legislative priorities, if we keep it open enough, they can figure out a way to make it work. We don't know what the legislative landscape will be yet, and the trading that happens. Just as an example, there's a bill in California to allow middle housing anywhere in the state. There's also legislation, I believe, in California that ties your state transportation dollars to the outcomes of your affordable housing that you're required. We don't have actual teeth to the, we have a Growth Management Act that stipulates that we plan for future population growth, that we come up with comprehensive plans, that identify how we're actually going to get there, and then our work plans to create that, but there's no ramifications if you don't. So, there are pieces of legislation floating out there in other states, and then in Oregon, they just allowed triplexes throughout the entire state. So, I think...
I mean, if you think it's clear enough that they'll take...
You're going to be talking housing policy all night, so...
Well, and I think throughout the session, we'll make sure that we're paying attention to any items that come up that are related. I know there's prefiles out there. We can kind of take a look and see what's already floating around, and how both Deborah and I could make sure we're paying attention.
Yeah, I think Susan, working with Deborah, you're going to have that insight, so I think that she'll be that communication.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there was something specific that we could actually advocate for, but we'll track it. So, thank you.
It's fine.
Oh, Councilmember Jones.
So, a couple of comments on the overall sheet, and I'll start on this one, having to do with the first priority. I just have a small suggested word change. So, this is, the housing supply is one of the bullets we're discussing under this first section, and what it currently says is state resources and support to address homelessness, affordable housing. And I'd just suggest that it's state resources and policy support to address homelessness, to insert the word "policy" is my recommendation. And then, the second item, if I may. I'm a little concerned with the language on the second page, having to do with solid waste reduction. It says that the city is interested in tracking legislation on solid waste. Frankly, I have no interest in tracking legislation. I'm interested in effective legislation. So, I would suggest that in saying that the city is interested in bills that help reduce packaging and plastics and so forth. I'm sorry to be a stickler, but...
Oh, no, that's okay. And I was about to move on to the second page, but I'm happy to take all the feedback at any time.
Okay, thank you. So, if those are both acceptable?
I'm all about direct and clear. And not distracting. All right, so, we go with the first page?
All right, second page. Thank you. So, here we are on the second page, and I just wanted to outline several changes that were made. First, originally, we had the new funding options for parks, maintenance, and operation and preservation needs. That was originally put on there to support the Washington Recreation and Parks Association 2020 bill, but because we already have the MPD, we felt it was a little too much to have on the handout, so we removed that. I removed the residential landlord tenant act item, put it on the first page, and then we added the addition of the property tax levy lid lift and the future purchase of the Armory. So, those were the big changes on the back there. So, that leaves our list changes to property tax levy lid lift, a ban on sales and transport of English and Atlantic Ivy, and our solid waste reduction item, and then funding for the new first responder regional training center, continued funding for the Capitol Lake Deschutes Estuary Phase 2 EIS, and future purchase of the National Guard Armory on East Side Street.
Councilmember Jones?
No, I just want to say thank you for being so responsive to the comments that we offered during the last round. Thank you.
All right, I got Mayor Pro Tem Bateman. Anybody?
I would appreciate a reminder of the last bullet of why the council is passionate and interested about that, for my colleagues.
The National Guard Armory. There's lots of opportunities for that to be a community center of our own design and a hub.
And its property in our downtown area that could be used for even housing, workforce housing, something.
It's a big enough...
Crime property.
Third of a block for housing there.
It's an historic building, so probably, I don't know, tearing it down. But yeah, there's, there's other groups that are very interested in us following, tracking that, the future use of that.
I would appreciate an update as that progresses. I would be interested in the details of like, how much and if we're going to extend a lot of political capital on it. You know, we want to, we want to get updates on how that's unfolding, or at least if the mayor could update us as that...
Yes, happy to do that. Happy to do that. All right, I've got Councilmember Partially followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Two things on the property tax lid lift. I would not be opposed to also seeing if there's a lot of pushback tying some of the, in the short-term increases to the cities or the jurisdictions that have declared a state of emergency for houselessness to allow us to provide additional revenue streams for those efforts. So, in other words, if we have, we have a complete pushback on moving the 1%, seeing if there was some interested parties that would be willing to push forward an increase above 1% for those jurisdictions that have declared a state of emergency on the homelessness.
Oh, you're talking about the property tax levy lid lift?
Yeah, property tax lid lift.
Connecting it to the amount of homelessness people?
Well, just that you've, you've declared it, and so, we're going to ask for a little more in the property tax, just because there may be a lot of pushback and they, a lot of people that won't want to expend the political capital to change that. But there might be a compromised position. Pushing up the lid lift, there, there may be too much pushback in the legislature and the Senate.
Right, hence it hasn't happened in 20 years.
Yeah, but there might be a shorter term to provide some revenue stream, to go up to 1.25 for the communities or 1.3 or whatever.
Declared an emergency.
The declared an emergency tied to that declared emergency.
And then that additional revenue would be tied to affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking out top, that's one of the things that I've been pondering as a way to get some more backing on it. And I'll leave it there for people to think about this. The other one is, I, I don't know if that's the order, but I really want to get the EIS done. And I've heard tell that it's not high on the priority of our governor, so I wouldn't mind a little more push than the bottom of our pile.
Reordering the second page. I agree, they are, there's an ask right now, it's $2 million to finish the EIS and keep it on track for completion. And I've served on that committee and I strongly support that.
Yeah, moving that up a little bit because I, I'm a little concerned.
Okay.
They are too.
I'm seeing nods all across, though. That sounds good. Okay. Okay, and what about what Councilmember Partially is...
It's just food for thought.
Is that something we should just, in our, okay, so, did you have something to respond to that?
I have an idea.
Have an idea? Do you want to share it now?
Yeah, that's fine. That's actually my main comment. I, I'm ecstatic to see the 1% here, even though I think we all agree we wanted it on the front. There's a lot, a lot going on, so I'm, I'm, I'll call a win because eight years is a squeaky wheel and it's here now. So, that's a huge win. And I've talked to Councilmember Partially a little bit about this, and I, I think there's an opportunity to, to possibly tap into a higher level of revenue around the 1% in sort of an incentive, incentive idea, both around housing planning and homelessness planning and around climate planning. And so, but I think those are two nuance to put here. But as we're talking with our members in our breakfast, it's a good thing to bring up and talk about that, you know, we need cities in particular, but cities and counties to be fully bought into the climate crisis and the housing crisis in the state of Washington. And in order to get any new money, even if it's not restricted, they should have those plans on the books and be talking about how they're going to reach, help the state reach its climate goals and its housing goals. So, that, that is my main comment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay?
Think we're good? Excellent, see nods, all right. Thank you, Susan.
Well, I'm going to need a motion to approve...
Oh, I'm so sorry. I did not have my motions ready. So, I, I'm going to make the motion to approve the proposed 2020 Legislative Agenda with the edits.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Look forward to working with you this season.
I just have some, you know, next steps and dates. You know, we have our breakfast on January 8th. Session begins on the 13th, and it's a 60-day session. And throughout, you're going to get updates and have to meet with our legislators. And I'm excited to get started.
We're excited to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Item 6C is an update on the Boulevard Road property draft request for qualifications. And so, in 2016, the city acquired approximately 72 acres on Boulevard Road. Approximately 59 acres are dedicated to city parkland. Approximately 2.8 acres are dedicated to the future extension of the Log Cabin Road, which was bought with, was not bought with park funds as well. The remaining portion of the property, approximately 10 acres, is located adjacent to Boulevard Road and was also not paid for with park dollars and was designated to be set aside for development of multifamily housing and potentially some neighborhood-oriented commercial uses. And I will, now that you're ready, I will let you take it from here. There's a nice photo of Mike Reed, Economic Development Director, doing his selfie at his, at his desk. And Keith Staley, our interim Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Selby and members of council. We're going to do things a little differently right now. Mike is going to deliver this presentation remotely and electronically. This is not the real Mike Reed, but this was recorded prior to this meeting, and we will use it as part of the RFQ process. So, anybody visiting our page will be able to access this video and this information. So, without further ado...
I'm Mike Reed, Economic Development Director for the City of Olympia. In Olympia, we know that our citizens cherish their natural spaces and their parks. We also know that housing costs are dramatically increasing, and one of the reasons being that supply isn't meeting the overall demand. Over the last few years, we've seen these two known facts conflict with each other as we strive to preserve what's important to us and meet the needs of a growing city. One instance that highlights how we're trying to bring balance can be seen at the city-owned property at 3900 Boulevard Road. On September 27th, 2016, the city council unanimously approved an option agreement for the purchase of property on Boulevard Road for the stated purpose of a future park, a transportation corridor, and a mixed-use development. The city used a variety of funding to acquire the nearly 72 acres. The reason for a variety of funding sources was that the property would need to meet a variety of goals. Parks money was used to preserve a large amount of property for its recreational value. The transportation impact fees were used to secure a portion of the property that would be used for a future road connection. And the general fund was used to purchase 10 acres to be used for the development of more housing. The city's purchase of this property and an adjacent property were the result of significant community interest in preserving the undeveloped land from two subdivision proposals. This acquisition was celebrated and unanimously approved because it provided a balanced response to a subject that had created a lot of neighborhood concern. The neighborhood concern was spurred by a proposal of two housing developments on the heavily wooded property adjacent to LBA Park, more commonly referred to as the LBA Woods. The development proposals would have added about 900 new homes to the area, but also would have resulted in a loss of this forested area and recreational asset. The city first acquired a 74-acre parcel that was proposed to be a 400-lot development referred to as Ashton Woods. The second purchase was 72 acres. This property was proposed for a subdivision named Bentridge and would have had commercial space and a mix of over 500 single-family and multifamily homes. Through these purchases, the city has committed to preserving over 130 acres of the property known as LBA Woods. And we're now ready to initiate one of our other goals for the property, the development of housing on the 10 acres at 3900 Boulevard Road. The property is owned RM18, which means an average of 18 housing units per acre. Typically, we see properties owned as RM18 being built as zero lot lines, townhomes, cottage-style housing, and apartments, or a mix of all four. Briggs Village would be a good example of what building in this zoning looks like. The comprehensive plan designation for this property allows for up to one acre to be used as neighborhood retail. The Wildwood Center would be a good example of a comparable neighborhood commercial center that would work in this location. The commercial property has a restaurant, coffee shop, and a produce market on a little over a half an acre, and it's strongly supported by the surrounding neighborhood. Over the last year, the city council has been having discussions on how best to fulfill the goal of obtaining housing for the 10 acres and what our vision for the property would be. The vision for a successful project would be one that focuses on homes being built for working-class families. It would incorporate environmental sustainability in development, design, and construction, and would be of a quality design that reflects the character of the neighborhood. A successful developer would be one that works with the surrounding neighborhoods in the design and the development of the project. We'd also like to see the inclusion of some commercial space that has some broader community benefit, like a daycare or a produce market. And the performance, track record, and timeliness of the developer or builder is critically important to this project. In January, the city will issue a request for qualifications that will outline our vision for this property, the requirements of a successful submittal, and the timeline for interested parties to respond. For more information and updates about this project, please visit our website at olympiawa.gov/boulevard.
Oh, my gosh. Great. Talk about making our hearts happy, right? Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
Thank you to Mike, Josh, and Kelly for delivering that great product. Mike did it in one take.
It's next.
So, with that, I'm here to answer your questions. Our hope this evening is to hear any feedback or to respond to any questions that council has about this proposed process of moving a 10-acre property owned by the city into the market to see how the market responds, to actually go forward and find a development partner that can be part of our outreach process. The Land Use Committee discussed this for quite a while. We went back and forth about whether to start a public engagement process without a developer or with a developer. And we ended up saying that including a developer made sense because we can talk about what's real. We can't just talk about, geez, wouldn't it be great if we had this and we had that? And in the end, we said, well, we need to have something that's buildable. And the way to do that is to actually go out and find a development partner and do that work with them in partnership and with the community and move this forward in that manner. That's where the Land Use Committee ended up. Our hope and intention is that we have a, we have a 10-acre property that's owned RM18. It's not going to be ranchettes. It's going to be a multifamily mixed-use project that is affordable, but also driven by the market. And the sooner that we move forward with this, the better. That's why we're doing this tonight, and we didn't wait until the 17th, because as you saw from the timeline that was included there, it's pretty aggressive. Our hope is that by February 3rd, we're actually making decisions about who our development partner is so that they can move forward over the course of the summer and be developing plans. And hopefully by 2021, we actually see a construction equipment on the property and a development that, that's moving forward. So, that, that's our sort of hope and dream for the property. I also thought it was incredible, when you look at tonight's agenda, every single agenda item is tied together. Every single item is, is all moving towards, towards responding to this homeless crisis. Everything from inner-city transit, delivering fare-free service, to this proposed development. Everything that we've done this evening is moving in the same direction. So, I hope that we can move this forward. You will get an opportunity to approve whatever agreement we end up with. You'll get an opportunity to approve who we're selecting as our development partner. So, there's plenty of opportun, additional opportunities for council to participate in this process. This is not a final draft that we had here in the, the packet. You're not approving this RFQ this evening. Mark and I and Mike will work out the final details. There's some legal language that needs to be affixed to this, it's kind of more of a marketing piece, but we'll roll that out, we'll get it out to the development world, and we'll see where it takes us. Thank you.
All right. I just have to start off and thank the Land Use Committee for distilling what seemed like 300 ideas that came out of a study session into something that we can put out there. So, Councilmember Gilman?
Thank you. So, thank you, Keith, for the, the video and the presentation. Just, I just wanted to sort of reiterate my short version of how I understand this to be set up, that we're not, we're not selling the parcel of land now. We're seeking, much like we did with the Water Street Community Renewal Area, a development partner. We're going to offer some of our funds to go together with them in the initial public process and, and project vision development. So, we've offered them the bullet points that council came up with of what we'd ideally like to see in the project. We're saying, think about those, come to us, and then together, can we shape a proposal that includes as many of these as possible? And then we would consider how we would, we'd go about transferring the property to them to, to be able to build the thing. But we're, we're really recruiting a developer who's willing to talk with us and the community about what's possible, and, and we're considering making an investment ourselves as the city in that process.
Thanks for that clarification. Got Councilmember Cooper followed by Mayor Pro Tem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby.
Thank you, Keith. This is really exciting and to the nod to the idea around the community renewal area, we learned from that experience to, to get a partner first so that we can design it and get it right. So, I have a comment and a question. The video does a really good job tying it to the LBA Woods. When I read the marketing piece, I didn't feel as much. And I don't know if it's something in the environmental and sustainability bullet or in the pictures that better connects this as, I don't know, this isn't the right language, but the, you know, sort of the gateway to the woods from that side of, of LBA Woods. And, and then the other, the question is around what, what is our timeline and process for being more exact about the location of a fire station? Because it feels really soft, and I'd like to be more clear in the, in the document.
That came up at agenda setting, too, that there's other discussions around locations.
Can we jump in here?
Yes.
So, and then we just had the same conversation at Land Use around the annexation study, which council will get more involved in after the first of the year and make, probably make some decisions in 2020. So, in terms, I think the new chief has come in, and he has a lot of ideas that we need to really reflect upon in terms of what decisions we make around either relocating or adding another fire station in that area to support it. I think there are other opportunities potentially within this area with, without having to potentially build a fire station as part of this 10-acre parcel. I don't think that's a decision you have to make tonight. I think as you let the rest of the annexation study play itself out, some of the ideas that we're talking about is whether or not you would stand up even a temporary fire station for the now that might be able to get us by and see what our service needs are in the southeast area in particular before we make a firm decision on citing a new fire station. So, that would be kind of what my recommendation now is, I don't think you have to make that decision as part of this 10 acres. But I think through that annexation process, you'll have opportunity to hear more about that.
Okay. I have Mayor Pro Tem Bateman followed by Councilmember Jones.
You've already heard so many positive comments, but I just have to say, I am thrilled, so excited. For the viewing audience, we, the parks measure passed in 2015? Yeah. And so, the council in 2016 made the decision to cut, carve out a number of these acres from that parks property for the specific purpose of affordable housing. And I do appreciate that there were multiple items on our agenda today, all related to the issue of housing, housing affordability. the issue of housing affordability. That combined with inner-city transit, I just have to say that we have a really awesome community and awesome staff, and the leadership of the council, our comprehensive plan, all of the things that we're working on together cumulatively. I know we can get caught up in the day-to-day, but cumulatively, it's really making a difference. And I'm hopeful, well, first, the communication portion of this is really a model, I think. This is how people take in information and will engage more. I do think for like Facebook or social media, we'd have to make it shorter, but that being said, this is a really amazing opportunity for us to get input from the public, let them know, so as a model for, I mean, this, I think, was phenomenal, like amazing. So, thank you. And thank you to the Land Use Committee for working on this. And I was there at the study session when we gave you about a million things that we put up on the wall. And I was thinking, I'm glad I'm not on that committee that's going to have to parse all that out. So, thank you for that. I also hope that this can be a model for how we look at other pieces of public surplus property and how other communities can look at surplus property. We are not the only ones that have property available to us as we are experiencing this housing crisis. We have the port, we have the county, we have other cities. We're all experiencing this together, and I hope that as we change this dialogue and we think about transformational change, we can really push the envelope on assessing whether or not each of those pieces of property are utilizing themselves for the best use of our community. So, thank you very much. Thank you to Mike. Thank you for your work and the Land Use Committee.
All right. Councilmember Jones.
So, I'm very pleased to be at this point as well. Passing the Metropolitan Parks District and the relationship with the LBA parcel acquisition and setting this aside, it just feels right to be here now. And the content of the RFP is, or RFQ, feels good to me. Thank you for the work that went into this, and the video makes it fun and further explores what our interests are here. I also was pleased to see the target demographics being identified in the RFQ. I do have a concern, and that comes back to Councilmember Cooper's comments about the fire station. I feel as though the fire station is a constraint and an unknown, an uncertainty that we're passing on to a potential partner. And my sense is that it's our obligation to answer this question now before we pass that uncertainty on to someone new. It's sitting in our lap to answer that question. I appreciated your comments, Jay, on where we are in this process, but if there is any way to resolve this question as quickly as possible and hopefully before the RFQ goes out, whether this property is constrained in this way or not is a significant piece to what we're asking for, that is a part of this request. And I think that the onus is upon us to answer that question.
So, I've got Councilmember Partially's hand is raised.
Mainly just to point out to those who have been concerned about public process in this, the benefit of an RFQ over an RFP is that RFQ still allows conversations and the plans to be changed by the community and input to be real instead of if you're going into the permitting, pre-subs, and so forth, you then take out that ability to actually influence the developers in what ends up being the final product. So, RFQ is a really nice plan. To answer somewhat the fire plans, I don't know that that's not going to be affected with the annexation, and that LBA Woods and this property may not be the best place if we annex that whole southeast party, part of our urban growth boundary. It may need to be further south. So, yeah, I agree, we should look at it, but this segment, this 10 acres, may not be the perfect place for it.
I'll just jump in on that. That was my red flag when I looked at this, and if I brought it up at Agenda Setting, I'm like, ooh, that like, that changes a developer's idea of what they can put there. And since we have 80 acres about quarter-mile south, maybe half-mile south, the Zon parcel, and if we, yeah, there's a lot more opportunities for that to be used, something like a second fire station on that side. Or, yeah, that came up, too. Anyhow, yeah, I agree. That's, I really think it's, that's going to be a real, it'll cause hesitation, and we don't really want hesitation around people looking at this project right now. So, I don't know if we can take it out. I don't know how it got in there, actually.
So, let me try again. So, as I'm having conversations with Chief John, again, who's kind of come at it the last couple of months, I think what's clear in his mind is we wouldn't need to relocate one of our existing stations to this site to serve it or relocate it somewhere else in the area. It's more that as we look at this site and we look at the annexation area potential, that we may need another station somewhere in that zone. So, it's not clear at this point exactly where that would need would be. So, his goal would be to kind of stand up a temporary station potentially in a spot that seems logical, doesn't necessarily, I don't think any of us think this Boulevard roadside is the site for that next fire station, however. I hear that it's a question that's still outstanding, but I don't know that we have an exact firm answer other than we know we'll need another station if we annex. And I just, I don't think you need to make that decision as part of this site, because I don't think this site will be where it will be.
Councilmember Jones.
So, thanks, Jay. Could you explain what the impact would be if we removed this from this RFQ?
Keith?
Well, from a development perspective, obviously, it simplifies things. As you've noted, there's some uncertainty in it. So, removing that uncertainty creates, you know, an avenue just to move forward with a residential or a commercial or a mixed-use development. The property appraises at about $2.1 million, so it's a $200,000 decision, you know, that if we end up having to replace that property, we're probably going to have to either buy property or use other properties that we've already acquired. So, you know, it's out there.
I'm getting kind of this, just be coy and wait? So, you're saying leave it in?
I'm feeling like there's more conversation that needs to be had before a decision either way, and maybe this isn't the right venue. That's what I'm hearing in between the lines.
I'm hearing you. I'm hearing you, and we have a meeting next week, so.
Excuse me, we can go back and talk tomorrow a little bit more about it, about the language and be more clear on the language that's in here. I think that's what I'm hearing, is just more clarity around what's there.
I would just say that I think we're trying to preserve this timeline as best we possibly can.
Okay. Mayor Protem Bateman.
It seems like if we have additional properties where this fire station could be you, could be built, why would we say specifically that it could be here when we have other options available to us that could take a decade or more for those to actually be created?
I, Councilmember Gilman.
So, I would, I think it makes sense, all of your concern, and if we could just allow the city manager to consult with the fire chief before we pull it out, and we could have an opportunity to revisit this for a moment next week.
That postpones it going out for a week? No?
We'll shine things up. We'll keep moving things along. At this point, I don't think, you know, this Tuesday or next Tuesday is going to materially affect our timeline, but next Tuesday, we're going to need to make a decision and move forward. So, we'll be back.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. The only other thing I heard that I concur with, I mean, I concur with everything, but the three pictures in the, now I'm micromanaging, but there's two pictures that are very similar, maybe put in a picture of some family walking on a trail in the woods.
There you go. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So, with that, we, I think, are, you got direction. It's the time for council reports, mayor's report. I have nothing to report. I'll go to my left, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I, oh, you know, one thing I neglected to say earlier in the meeting is I just wanted to congratulate Susan on being our legislative liaison. It was really cool to see you up here, and I look forward to other leadership opportunities that you take at the city.
Awesome. Mayor Protem Bateman.
I'll just report that multiple council members attended the holiday parade this last weekend and that I was able to go and make a couple positive remarks at our downtown tree lighting ceremony. It was very exciting, and I know some people have comments about our smaller tree, but it's getting bigger, and it looked fantastic.
Patience. Patience. Yep. All right. Councilmember Jones.
So, just one item, and that is to report on the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting that was held on December 6th, and I'll be as abbreviated as I can. The first thing I want to say is that we did recognize some staff anniversaries. We have a very small staff at Thurston Regional Planning Council. However, we recognized two staffers for 20 years of service and one for 25. So, I just want to say, staff there is excellent and stable and wants to be a part of what we're doing there. There was a brief presentation on the extension of the Yelm-Tenino Trail. If you're a biker or a walker in that part of the county, an extension out to Bakota from Tenino would be, is being contemplated. Also, we received a report on the legislative session priorities, and I just wanted to share some of those with you. Some of them very much mirror the legislative priorities for Olympia or other folks who have these sorts of agendas in our region. Shared revenue, of course, is a part of all of these. There is, of course, a strong emphasis on transportation, a strong emphasis on growing public transit, real concern about our rural transit system in Thurston County and the potential impacts of revenue changes associated with car tabs. And then just to acknowledge the ongoing work on I-5 from Tumwater to Mounts Road, which is north of the Nisqually Delta. We've completed the preliminary work there. There's been modeling scenarios that have been brought forward. There have been criteria laid out, and I've requested a presentation, and I'd like to work with Agenda Setting. I think that what happens to I-5 is critical to this community. This is a long-term planning process. We're scratching the surface. We're getting started, but at the same time, we are laying a foundation that will have long-term impacts on Olympia, and so I don't think it's too early for this council to be aware. In addition to that, we adopted our strategic plan. We adopted our 2020 work program, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I just wanted to pass on to Councilmember Jones, and say, I guess, to TRPC as well, that I'm thankful that Mark Daly is facilitating the Regional Housing Council Retreat next week for our regional conversation and doing that as, because we're members and not charging anybody any extra for the facilitation. And I met with him today for an hour, and he's met with all of the council members and alternates and city managers for all four jurisdictions and preparing for this, and it's a pretty significant workload. So, if you can pass it on to Mark.
I'd be happy to do that. You know, I would just say, I'll take, thank you for your comment. I'll just respond. I have served on Thurston Regional Planning Council for the last eight years. Last two years, I've chaired that organization. They have been through, not just dramatic change, but a real responsiveness to the needs of Thurston County and our community. They have been nimble and effective, and Mark Daly's leadership has been a large part of that. Thurston Regional Planning Council's doing a good job.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
Yes. So, last Wednesday was Inner City Transit Authority, and you had a pretty good dose, but there's one other item I wanted to bring up there, that we recognized Karen Mesimer's service on her last of nine years of serving on the Transit Authority, and she has definitely been a steady voice about being bold and unafraid and moving forward. So, it was a great moment, and she's both a former Olympia City Council person and in recent years has served as a citizen representative on that board. So, that was nice. It was nice. On Friday, the South Capital Neighborhood, State Department of Enterprise Services, and City Staff Triad Meeting happened, and the primary issue was a recap of the process to have a conversation or a dialogue around the impacts of the state Capitol and legislative session in particular on parking in the South Capital Neighborhood. And I was so amazed, a year ago this week, we had a meeting in the basement of Lincoln School, and there were some pretty frustrated neighborhood people. They had 12 meetings in the time in between, and Max DeJornet has led our staff team in creating a whole set of consensus recommendations between the three parties for some modest improvements and some changes to begin. So, it was a pretty dramatic meeting, and I just, I want to recognize that big work. And Cynthia, oh, help me, Cynthia Stewart offered to facilitate both a year ago at the community meeting and then led this stakeholder process through a dozen meetings. And that's pretty incredible work. So, that was a fantastic Friday afternoon. And last night, the coalition of neighborhood associations had a meeting that had so many people that the roundtable was filled, and there were more neighborhoods represented in the audience. That was a good thing. They took on three topics: neighborhood traffic, roundabout sidewalks, speed control, and how a neighborhood might bring those concerns. The Downtown Improvement District, Todd Cuts came from the Olympia Downtown Alliance and explained that process. And then they had an update and a presentation on the short-term rentals, sort of the public engagement and the research process that staff are involved in right now. So, that was an action-packed and probably lesson learned, don't have three big topics in one meeting. That was a lot. That was a lot. And then the last, I just had a question for Councilmember Cooper. Earlier, you'd mentioned inner-city transit and the waste management drivers. Is there a date you were proposing for that demolition derby?
Oh, see, demolition derby, now we got to do it at the track in Tenino.
Yeah, it needs to be at the Speedway. There are six surplus buses that Inner City Transit has, so before we make a decision on their disposition, it would be good to know if there's a dump truck that might, you know, so.
I just have this monster truck visual.
We'll find a date. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Any questions for that? All right. Councilmember Partially.
I only have one thing to report, but I did see Mark Barber, our city attorney, kind of rolling over in his eyes at the risks associated with the derby between the waste and the bus drivers. I have one thing to report. Next week, on December 17th, at 6:00 PM in Chambers, we are going to be honoring Nathaniel Jones for his eight years of service. So, we'd like to invite any of the public to come join us.
There'll be cake.
There'll be cake. Food.
All right. Thanks. Thanks so much. City Manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One item to report tonight, reporting for Councilmember Rollins, who couldn't be here tonight. So, she and I, with other staff, attended a TCOM member-agency meeting today to talk about changes to the intergovernmental agreement. So, based on their new sales tax, they have, they want the ability now to be able to secure bond financing on their own, because they have the ability to do that now with their new funding source, so they don't have to go through the member agencies. So, that would be a change to the agreement, and then we're taking the opportunity as we're doing that to do some cleanup language on the agreement. So, you'll see that coming back to you at some point in time, but today was just the initial meeting for that. And then she also wanted to report out that last week, the TCOM Board approved a radio replacement contract with Motorola for $30 million.
That has been a long time coming, so it's very, very exciting news and a great deal and keeping us safe for generations, hopefully. All right. Any questions for our city manager? All right. With no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned. With no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.